All to the June 14, 2023 Budget and Finance Committee. And we're scheduled tonight to review last night's meeting from the public hearing. Before we do that, I want to call on Sheriff Fitzhugh, if you don't mind, if you'll come up to the podium. We had an incident last night where one of our participants had an accident. I don't know, Sheriff, if you want to explain that. Basically, this is an update.
Hey, Brian, you probably could help me on this, but I think from Brian, I understand the gentleman went home last night about 10 o'clock, was my understanding. They did not really find anything wrong with him. And his recollection of the experience is not there. He doesn't really remember it. But as far as we know from the last report, he's doing fine. We've not heard anything different from that.
To let everyone know what we'll be doing tonight. Basically, we're going to discuss our public hearing and go through the discussion that we had last night, try to answer those questions as best we can. And then after that, we'll review any budgets and changes as necessary. We do not have to vote on anything tonight. But on the 21st, we'll end up having to, at that time, come up with a vote. Now, what we sent to publication, you know, we basically can send that forward to the 21st unless someone wants to, as we do review, make some changes tonight. You know, that is up in the air. But anyway, I'd like to start with our review of the public hearing. Michael, I don't know whether I want to call on you to start us off with. We had, I don't know, about 12 people speak somewhere in that neighborhood. If you want to start on the first one or two, we can all discuss this as we go.
Sure. And I can go through and answer a couple of questions that were brought up last night. So one of the first ones that comes to mind for me was, we had an individual talk to us about Hamilton County's tax rates. So I did go research that to make sure that was accurate. Their current tax rate is $2, a little over $2.23. So ours right now is 1.6162, so ours is considerably lower than that. If you were in the city down there, you could be paying close to $4 if you were in the city of Chattanooga. So that was one thing I just wanted to clarify. I also went and double-checked all of the rates, tax rates, that we read to you the other night. I believe it was me or the mayor read that to you, one of us. Williamson County is $1.88, Hamilton is 2.2373, Sumner County is 2.262, and Wilson is So just for clarification there. Another question we got last night was about a little over $700,000 in our contributions line item to the Chamber of Commerce. I did speak to Ms. Susan Allen last night about that. That is our required portion of 15% of hotel motel tax. And another large dollar amount that I will touch on is we also pay 5% of hotel motel tax for the greenway that runs through both Rutherford County and the city. So that is our portion of that, just to clarify that. And then there was quite a few questions last night about the schools budget and salaries there, but I will just touch on that briefly and say that the schools came to us and asked for the exact minimum amount, and that is what this body passed in the publication. So we lowered that as low as we could, and so we could not change that anymore from the county commissioner from the budget level. And then I believe the other, a couple of the other questions last night regarded school facilities tax. And then I did speak to a few individuals after the meeting, and we did try to get that changed, you know, with the state legislature, which I've talked about. So they weren't, a couple of the individuals did not know that was set by the state or capped. So we were able to answer some of those questions. But I believe those are the main questions that I remember that I had written down, so I hope that helps.
That covered many of them. I'm going to run through these one at a time as I've got them written down. And any of you that want to comment, other than what I've got, Ms. O'Neil spoke about wants versus needs and being physically conservative. She mentioned the firefighters and also the school additions. And I think Michael covered the schools cost there pretty well just a moment ago.
I just want to touch on that one thing that I did reach out to Dr. Sullivan, and they did provide. And I believe either Chairman P. or Chairman Phillips will touch on this a little more as we pulled the cost per square foot for the schools dating back, you know, 10 years. And it's really more than doubled. And so I think that was very telling, as inflation hits us just like it does anybody else. So I believe we were well under the $200 range per square foot. And Plainview Elementary was in the upper 200s, and I believe some of these high school additions came in at around 300 or above. I'm looking at Dr. Sullivan, he's shaking, and said yes. So I mean, I think that is also telling about that. And the other thing regarding debt, not just schools, about being conservative is even with our AAA bond, the last debt we issued was in 2021 for Plainview, and that interest rate was a little over 1.6% for a 20-year bond. Currently, right now, they're at 4% or above for a 20-year bond. So I mean, that's a big cost we have to bear somehow, regardless if that's for a school building or for a county building. But sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I appreciate that. And any of the other committee members that want to comment about any of these, I'm just going to bring these up kind of one at a time and remind us. I want to try to answer the questions that were put to the committee or asked of us. He also mentioned consolidating the school systems, not having two central offices, et cetera. The only school system that I know that's done that was Hamilton County, and that happened quite a few years ago. I heard at that time, and maybe somebody can correct me, that it actually cost them more after they consolidated. I can't tell you why, but I did read that at that time. You know, that's something that's come up a time or two. We've actually had a, I think we've had referendums in the past on that issue, whether to consolidate the school systems or not. But to me, that would be, that would be a question for the citizens to answer in a referendum, personal opinion. Anybody else? Commissioner, Chairman Gooch?
But it's not even our decision. I mean, the county commissioner, am I right, would have no say in consolidation. The city council, and then probably go to a referendum, or is a referendum required of the city council?
No, so we're not a, the city does not have a special school district like Franklin or Lebanon, so they have a city school system. So if the city decided to get out of the schools business, those, I believe it's 8,000 or 9,000 kids, in approximately that range, would just, we would have to absorb them. I do not believe there's any legal obligation for them to give us the buildings either because the city owns them, so we would just have to absorb those 8,000 or 9,000 children.
Kind of like what we do after they get out of the sixth grade.
Correct.
Did you say that we would have to buy their buildings?
No, no, I just said.
Or that would come with the kids?
I just said that's not an automatic requirement. Now, I don't know what they would do with those school buildings, but the city owns them, not the school system. So they would have to lease them or give them to us or something.
Any other comments from commissioners on this first person? The next person that spoke was Ms. P., and she is a farmer. She actually was representing herself and family, but also Farm Bureau, she's on that board. And basically, a lot of the farmers can't afford to continue to farm. Tax rate is basically driving some of them out of business. And, you know, that's kind of her comment there. She asked if we could look at other options to share the cost of the growth instead of always putting it on property tax. Comments from any of the commissioners? Chairman Harris?
I listened to her, and I was trying to understand as well. So is she basically saying that developers are taking away the farms? Is that what she's saying?
I don't know that she does that. You know, she's a pretty astute person. She's also on our planning commission. I don't know if you are aware of that. So she sees the growth every month. She sees the same things that we see as far as amount of housing available, lots that are available. She sees subdivisions that are coming out. But part of what she said was, you know, try to look for other sources of income other than just the property tax. He did mention, you know, the state helping us with impact fees. Well, that's one. She also mentioned the wheel tax and some kind of building tax, which I think she was inferring to an impact fee that the county could impose. But basically, she's asking for help, you know. People, and I've got friends all over this county, one in particular comes to mind that lived in Smyrna, and his farm was actually annexed into the city of Smyrna. He couldn't afford to continue to pay taxes on his farmland and ended up having to sell it. He didn't want to. He didn't want to stop farming, but he couldn't afford the tax on the property values at that time. And that's been, that's been over 15 years ago. So that's something that's, you know, pushing development. Mr. Piercey?
We have a program where the elderly can come in and freeze their property tax once a year. Who developed that program? Where did that come from?
It came from this commission. I worked on that, among other people. I had people calling me from Bristol and from Shelby County saying, hey, please do this. I think we were the first county that actually did it. We, the problem that you run into is the cutoff point. I forget what we started at. It was probably around 30,000. Jeff, do you remember?
It was lower.
It was lower than that. But anyway, that level that you can freeze your property tax at is set by the state. And if I'm not mistaken, it's around $47,000 per year income now. And that would be if a husband and wife jointly were on the property. You know, their joint income would have to be 47,000 or whatever that number is. Don't quote me on that. But it would have to do that. And you also have to, you have to prove that. You have to ring in your W-2s and meet with our trustee, which they've got people set up to do that. You call the trustee's office, and they will set up appointment time for you. You can come in, and if you meet their requirements, you can have your property tax frozen at the level that they're at. For instance, the level that they are right now, if you came in this year, whatever it ends up being, that would be your base, and anything in the future would be frozen. And I think you do have to renew that once a year. I'm mistaken on this, please correct me. We'll have Tibbs sit in on our next meeting, and he can explain this much better than I can. But you're correct.
So we didn't do it by ourselves. We had to have state help.
Yes, the state, because, see, that also freezes revenues that would go to the state.
Would it be any way, like on a large farm where they're actually farming for their living, that we could create a freeze on their taxes? Because they pay a large amount with multiple acres.
And I don't disagree with you. As a matter of fact, I think that would, that would be something good to look into, but that's outside of what we can do. That would be the state legislature would have to enact anything like that.
Thank you.
Now, we can, we can ask our steering chairman to look into that for us and, you know, talk to them.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way that Mayor's Office could kind of get this, you know, the, what we just talked about for fixed incomes, you know, to help with their, freeze their tax? Is there any way we can get that message out more? Or, you know, I know Teb comes in here and he talks about it, but it's like in two minutes. And I was wondering if we could get that maybe with your PIO and get some of that information out?
You know, that's, Commissioner, that's a very good point. And we have talked about that in our office because we get conversations with especially senior citizens on fixed incomes, and not just rural properties, but senior citizens having difficulty, and they don't know about the program. And so, you know, that's messaging out of the mayor's office and out of this body, as you know, is a constant challenge of a county this size. But you're exactly right. This is something that maybe we need to kind of go, how do we do a better job of promoting the programs that are available for those who are having some difficulties? I will definitely reach out to Lisa Kay, the Public Information Officer, this is her specialty, and see if she can't come up with some things. Lisa, you're sitting out there in the audience. I hope you're taking copious notes in this regard. Do you want to come up and share some ideas, Mr. Chairman? Is that appropriate?
That's fine. I don't think we need to suspend the rules where.
And please feel free to ask her questions. She's, this is something we've talked about.
Thank you, Mayor Carr, Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to say, we have been running the tax freeze program on RCTV, and we were just asked by Ted Beatty to stop running that. It was running before every meeting, and it was also just running on RCTV periodically. So like for the last 60 days, we have, he has been explaining the tax freeze. I just wanted to make that comment. We can start it back, but he literally just asked us to stop.
Well, and I think we need to, I would recommend to this body that we take his direction in that regard. But when it becomes appropriate for timing as to when the filing deadline is for those, for that kind of program, I think what Chairman Harris is saying is there are things that we can do to be more proactive about getting the message out there to those who might qualify.
I can work with him to make sure that we get it pushed out.
Commissioner Johnson?
As far as the farmers are concerned and everything, in their green belt program that they're eligible for, that gives them some relief?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, is there an insert in some of the mailings that we do that would help out there? I don't know if we'd, I know some jurisdictions what it will have, you know, an insert with, these are your options, you know?
Oh, you're talking about when you get your tax bill?
Right, yeah.
You know, I hadn't thought about that, but, you know, that might be an option. Maybe a good idea. That's something perhaps we need to speak to our trustee about, but I think that's a doable option. Mr. Piercey?
The requirements they have to qualify, can they be raised? I've had several people come and could not do it because they had too much. You know, they, basically, the reply I've got back from the people I've sent up there, well, you can't have anything and get it froze.
The state sets that rate, and they do change it occasionally. Chairman Phillips mentioned earlier, I mentioned 30,000. He remembers it being lower than that, but it has been raised, and it is raised by the state legislature. And how often they do that, how they look at it, I'm not sure.
47,570 right now.
Thank you, Mark.
But we have no control over the fluctuation of that either.
This commission does not.
Thank you.
I wanted to mention, follow up what Commissioner Irvin said a minute ago. I think when we mail out our tax notice every year, it's a tear-off type of a thing. On the bottom of that, we could explain exactly what those options are. Call so-and-so to see if you qualify. That's, everybody gets that, everybody. So I think we could do that, to kind of get that word out. That number is signed to the poverty line as well. So that's the reason we don't have a lot of influence over it, because of the assignment of low-income poverty line. So it's something above that, and that thing does go up and fluctuates occasionally.
There, there's some other things that we do, the state also. I think, what is it, the state gives us $3 per 100 on people that are disabled or lower income. And we actually match that. We're one of the few counties in the state that does that. So there's another bit of a break. Some of the extremely lower-income people in this county, sometimes that will, that amount that's given from the state and us will actually cover their bills for them. So people that are in that situation do need to call the trustee's office. Lisa mentioned it has been running on our Rutherford County TV channel, but you can always call the trustee's office or the mayor's office if you can't get that, and they will get you transferred to the appropriate people to check to see if you qualify. But that's something all of us are very cognizant of, and want to take care of our people. That's basically a safety net. We can't control the growth, and we haven't been able to keep up with growth, other than property tax, it seems like, in some cases, a little bit of the wheel tax. But try to protect our people when we are forced to do increases to our property tax.
Mr. Chairman, to get back to the farm deal, in the 1960s, when we actually formed the planning commission and put in our first zoning ordinance, everything was zoned residential. Every piece of property was zoned residential except for commercial and industrial. Even some of those have reverted back to residential. So all farmland is zoned residential. Hopefully, that's being discussed at our new comprehensive plan to change that, to change it to an agricultural zone, which in my mind could be at a rate significantly lower than a residential zone. So there are, I think, options that we have out there right now, and hopefully, our planning commission is looking at our new comprehensive plan. And we could correct something that was instituted back in the 1960s by looking at actual farmland and zoned agriculture. So maybe, maybe there's some relief coming through the planning commission.
Well, that would be good. I see our chairman of the planning commission sitting back there. Lo and behold, he used to be a farmer, if he's not still. I know he's living out in a good life out there in Eagleville, Rockville area. But hopefully, you'll look into that for us. That change, actually, I forget how many years ago that happened, but basically what that did is it stopped public hearings for, from changing from agriculture to, or agri-zoning. Basically, if you're already zoned for housing anywhere in this county, you do not have to go through a public hearing. Going through a public hearing is usually where you hit the roadblock and get stopped. And some reason, years ago, our commission decided to zone this county, I think it was R13 or whatever, basically, it was three houses per acre. That's since changed. I forget what your exact zoning is now, but that had to do with not having public hearings. Yeah, I have no problem, we could revert it all back to agriculture use as far as I'm concerned, but people, I think, should have the say on how their property is zoned, and anyone that wants to downzone their property can request and have it downzoned to agriculture from commercial. So that's something you can do on your own. You don't have to have our permission to ask for it. Now, you would have to go through a public hearing, but we've seen several of those, and they've all been approved, to my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman. Any other discussion on the farmland and questions she had? She's basically trying to save their family farm and hold it together, just like many other heritage farmers in this area. The next person that I've got down was Sue Parker, and she said, basically, she was tired of paying for new people, I'm paraphrasing, coming into the county. And she asked for our planning commission to look at the cost before approving development. Wanted our state representatives to be accountable and help to make the developers pay. Only thing I want to point out on there is the developers really don't pay. The people that are buying the property pay. The developer is passing that cost on to the person that's buying that. So, you know, it's not that the developers are paying, in my opinion. Strike me out if you think I'm wrong there, but I think the bottom line is, some people are beginning to recognize that we're kind of hogtied to property tax, wheel tax, we've got a severance tax, we have a hotel motel tax. But if you look at those breakdowns on how that money is divided out, you know, really the most viable option for us always falls back to the property tax. Mayor?
So there were approximately, I think you said, according to my notes, 12 who got up and spoke. And according to the notes that I took, 12 of those individuals, Ms. P., Ms. Parker, Ms. Crowell, Mr. Olds, Ms. Allen, and Mr. Thompson, all particularly referenced an understanding of the challenges that this body has with regard to how to pay for growth, and either asked directly or indirectly, or referenced why we couldn't levy impact fees or development taxes, or who's responsible for making growth pay for itself. And I just think that's important because I, like, I think, like you referenced, Mr. Chairman, I think people are starting to understand the responsibility that growth has in paying for itself in this county. And we don't, we don't have the tools, as we all know. We don't have the tools that other counties and other cities have, and hopefully, that can be taken care of.
Well, two, and understanding the way our government works, you know, it's obvious when you hear some of the statements that are made, people don't realize that we pay electric bills, you know, on this building, on every school building that we own, all the public offices, we pay insurance, we pay retirement fees. And all those change over time. For instance, the square footage that Michael mentioned went from, in 2010, from $124 a square foot to in 2022, 265 per square foot on the Rockville Elementary. And I saw, I believe in, I saw a 300-plus-dollar-square-foot figure on some of these new buildings that we're looking at. So people don't realize the county is in the same situation they are. You know, we have increases, and, you know, we don't have a cost of living increase for the county either. We've got to figure out how to pay for these growth problems that we're having. If you go back and look, Rutherford County has been not number one in the state, within the top three growth counties in this state for decades. We've been in the top 10 in the nation for a very long time, off and on. And to me, keeping up with it, I mean, I kind of feel like we're treading water, we've got water right up to our nose. If you figure, we've got 50,000-plus students right now, and our growth rate is what, 2.5% superintendent, maybe a little more than that. But I mean, at 2.5%, that's still, that's almost 2,500 students a year. Well, guess what? Our biggest high school is barely holding 2,500 students. So, you know, we're basically looked at having to find space for a school's worth of children every year, and we haven't done that. That's kind of, we're kind of paying catch-up right now. But to sustain that is very hard. And people don't realize that we kind of have our hands tied on where we have to pull those funds from. But I just want people to know, you know, the insurance costs that we have, paying the electric bills, you know, Middleton City Electric's rates went up. Well, guess what? We had to pay those too, just like we do at your home. But anyway, that was Ms. Parker's comments. But anyway, that was Ms. Parker's comments. Anybody else have any comments on hers?
I don't know about Ms. Parker, but I do want to talk about representatives. As we know, there was a letter out saying that we shouldn't raise taxes, and my point, and they always counter with TISA, you know, got you $54 million. And what I want people to understand and know is the BEP was such a flawed system that it hampered us, it hurt us, and it created debt, because they didn't, they punished school systems like ours who were growing. TISA is, is the answer to that. County Powers Act is not the answer. So we, we asked representatives, okay, you fixed a major flawed program, and now we need them to help us with this program, to help us raise revenue so that we can offset some of the tax burden that we have and some of the debt that we've incurred. So the reason I'm bringing this up, Commissioner Chairman P., is because they kept saying representatives and representatives, and they countered and all that stuff. TISA is a big influx of capital to us, but if you remember, and you and Jeff should remember, BEP was a very flawed system. We had been talking about getting rid of BEP for years, and now that we've done that, my point is, if they're able to do something like that, then they're able to help us raise revenue based off the County Powers Act that we need to repeal and have more power on our own to do these things. Does that make sense to everybody, what I'm saying? Remember, I lost you. I'm just saying, I'm trying to counter what they're counter, you know, I'm trying to counterpoint them, because they're saying they've done all they can, they've done a bunch. Yes, they've done some, but nowhere near enough. So the people that were brought up and brought up the representatives and all that stuff, and then I'm countering the letter where they say they've done all this and all that, there's a whole lot more they can do. And that's something that we, as a commission, we got to stay on them, and we got to start working with them better to try to raise more revenue, so we don't have these kind of meetings.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
So that's exactly right, Chairman Harris, and I think, two things, you know, what we're proposing in the form of this particular property tax hike, all it does is catch us up from 2011, when the county's budget has been operating in a deficit, a growing deficit since 2011. So for 12 years, we've had this ongoing deficit, and it's directly related to the fact that we haven't had the tools, as you've referenced, to pay for growth. And the BEP formula actually hurt our ability, because it penalized high-growth counties. I don't know that that was the intent of the formula, but that was the outcome. And I would say that, you know, my, my position on this, the position of the office of the mayor on this, is all Rutherford County is asking for is exactly the same ability and set of tools to pay for growth that other counties have. And with a AAA bond rating, this county, county commission has demonstrated a very physically restrained conservative policy on how to spend money. You don't get a AAA bond rating any other way, and we're one of four counties that have that. And I think that's illustrative of how responsible this county commission and the mayors previous to me have acted. And so all, I think it's important for us, as we engage our delegation and the General Assembly, which I'm hopeful, I really am hopeful, but as we engage, I think it's important that we press the idea that, yes, we need access to more sources of revenue to pay for growth, but what we really need is the ability to decide these at a local level, just like the state doesn't like the federal government telling it what to do, and the governor's office has already said, they do not have an interest in how the counties and the municipalities pay for growth. So just let us, give us that latitude that's already been given to other counties and cities. So thank you for your remarks, Chairman Harris.
Chairman, I'd like to ask a favor. Is there any way that we can suspend the rules and ask Dr. Sullivan to come up here so that he can explain better what I just tried to say?
I don't want to push Dr. Sullivan, something he doesn't want to do. He's motioned, he doesn't mind. Please come forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is something that we deal with all the time. So you're talking about infrastructure and TISA, and yes, TISA definitely did help get, fix some of the issues with BEP. What it did not do was address infrastructure. And so when I just pulled up the pages of the TISA rules by the State Board of Education, infrastructure is only mentioned 14 times, and it is mentioned every time under a fast-growing district, which is $35 million that can be split amongst every district across the state of Tennessee that meets the 2% growth threshold. It's the only time, infrastructure, I did a Ctrl+F for building, the word building is never mentioned in the TISA rule. So it's truly, you're right, you're exactly right. It is covering the instructional components, not the building aspects of it for growth.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. A couple of things I want to say about this. Y'all have heard me hammer legislators several times on this issue, and most of that's out of frustration. For their end of it, basically, they see, they allow us to have the flexibility to impose an impact fee. I think they are viewing that, or they're viewing that as their constituents seeing that as them okaying a tax increase. My opinion on that's a little bit different. It's kind of like Carrie Truman. He, he used to say the buck stops here at the presidency, but as Chairman Harris just pointed out, you know, our, our national Senate, House of Representatives pass unfunded mandates, and they pass them down to the states. States really don't like that, but the states, in turn, could turn around and pass unfunded mandates down to the counties. Guess what? There's nobody below us to pass that buck to. So the buck actually stops here. So we're, we're the ones that's got to figure out how to handle this. And something I want to repeat, I think it's worth repeating, you know, of the five largest counties in this state, we have the lowest tax rate. I'll jump ahead to, Michael already mentioned this lady, Susan Haisley, from Chattanooga. She said that she was discouraged by this property tax rate, and that Hamilton County did a much better job than us. Well, as he mentioned earlier, we could do our 26 cents and then do it again and still be below Hamilton County's tax rate, I believe. Not as close. Also, our debt is lower than theirs. Our growth is higher than theirs. So I think we're managing much better than what Hamilton County is. Unfortunately, people don't see that. It's something we can show you in black and white. It's not just Hamilton County, it's the other counties, the only one that has a lower debt than us. We have the lowest tax rates, even if we added the 26 cents that had been proposed as Knox County, but they have the tourism industry from the Smoky Mountains, plus they have the University of Tennessee athletic, generating money for them above and beyond what we're capable of generating here. So I think that having achieved a AAA bond rating here, as the mayor stated, is showing that we have been physically responsible, and we have been for a number of years. This didn't happen overnight. It's something that we, many years, have worked for. At any rate, that was Sue, and I'll, I'll jump back since he actually talked about that, or, excuse me, not Sue, that was Susan Haisley. She was actually the last one that spoke. And, but she did recognize that we need to have other options to get money, and was wondering why we didn't look at that. And people that don't follow what this commission is doing don't realize how we have been working for other options that we can use to find money. Let me move on to the next one that I've got here. Amanda Crowell. She's the lady that spoke, and then we cut her off when her time was up and let her speak again, but she says, you know, our job is to make this community better, and I kind of agree with that. She felt like the increase that she got, which was around $211, was too much, although she said that she could handle it, but there are other people that can't. She says that, you know, she understands that we need to have educational funding. She told us that we needed to raise our impact fees. You know, that's something else I kind of agree with, but as I said, people don't realize that this is something we've been striving to do, to find other options. Anybody else have any recall on Ms. Crowell and some of the things that she spoke of?
She the one talked about Hamilton County?
No, that, that was Susan Haisley.
I mean, the only thing I want to comment about her is that Hamilton County is in the bottom 10% of school systems, and we're in the top, and we're still way lower than them on tax rates, and, like I said, like you said, on debt. So I just wanted to say that, you know, because, I mean, our school system is 75% of our budget, so if we're going to spend that kind of money, it needs to be up in the top, and I think we're doing that.
Well, while we're talking about the school system too, something I want to mention is the demographics of this county versus some of the other counties out there, and these democrats, I see Dr. Sullivan nodding his head. You look at our demographics, you know, our lower-income percentage of students, our English as a second language students, I mean, it goes on and on. We have a very high percentage there. A lot of these counties, for instance, Williamson, I think they might be 75% white. You know, we are very close, if not close, to being an equal, you know, basically Hispanic, white, black, whatever ethnicity out there, is almost like 30, 30, 30, if not, right now, it's very close to that. And also, the poverty level that you see difference from some of these counties, Williamson's one of the richest, number one in the state, but it's also one of the richer counties in this nation. A lot of people don't realize that, but, you know, a lot of the country music stars that are mega millionaires live in that county, among other people, but they have a lot of advantages that we don't have, and part of that is demographics, as far as their schools go. We have very outstanding schools, I'm very proud of them, but we still have a higher influence, influx of students that don't speak English. How many languages have we got now? Dr. Sullivan, 70, over 70? Over 100 different languages spoken in this county, in our school system. That's astounding to me. At any rate, I think that for what we do, and you mentioned the schools is what's bringing this on for me, is if you go back and look at the per person, per student cost per county, we're about 14th, 12th to 14th, as far as amount paid. So we're well below the level of some of these counties, but if you look at the results that we get, we're well above most of them. So I think we've got something to be proud of there, and our money is being well spent. Again, going back to Amanda, last note that I saw on her was to raise impact fees, her suggestion. Anyone else have any comments about Amanda Crowell's? Next person I've got is Michael Vols. Hopefully, I'm saying that right. He's a gentleman that said we had at least 160 years of experience. Did say our county was getting ugly, and he said we needed to come up with development fees. Kind of paraphrasing, I'm going off my notes there. One thing he did say is we shouldn't have any fluff. One thing I'll point out is, many of the new commissioners that have come in, especially that have come to budget, have found out there's not a lot of fluff here. If you look, I don't know if you, did you give everybody a copy of this? Michael?
They get that last, the last meeting, not, not last night, but the last budget meeting we had, everybody got that.
Well, what I wanted to point out is our ending fund balance, you know, our rules say we need 15%. If you look, to me, if I was going to call anything fluff, I would say, basically, this money that we've got to, as a cushion in case something bad happens, that would be the only thing I could really point my finger to and say, well, maybe that's fluff. I don't personally feel that it's fluff, but people might look at it that way. Of the five counties that we've been looking at, including Rutherford, ours last year, or maybe that's as of 3123, is 26.84%. Michael, correct me, if we don't do anything, what will that be next year?
If there's no tax increase, no nothing, it would drop to right around 6% or 7%.
Okay, 6% to 7%. These other counties, Williamson has a fluff of 67.17%. Hamilton has a fluff, if that's what we're going to call this, of 46.42%, some are 40.45%. In Wilson County, 41.26%. And what this basically means is, this 15% that we're wanting for a minimum, is if we had a downturn, or whatever caused, say we were hit by a tornado that took out a lot of our schools, things like that, we could be in danger of not meeting our payroll. And kind of like Michael, if you think people are going to fuss at you about a tax increase, wait until you don't pay your employees on time. And this county, at 15%, we have to sometimes wait till the money starts coming in, you know, our year starts in July, and we don't start really collecting taxes, what is it, October? And so that lag time in there, we've got to have the money in place to pay our employees and any other thing that pops up. And if you get that fluff, or that fund balance down too low, you're in danger of not being able to make your payroll, and that's not something we want to do. We have actually, in the past, come close to that at times. I've heard where we've had some checks almost cross in the mail that has kept us from having to do that. That's one of the reasons this committee, in the past, had set that rate at 15%, so we didn't have that problem. And actually, why, we actually need to look at keeping that higher. And like I said, hopefully, you've got this in front of you. If you don't, I want to make sure Michael gets it to you, to actually see what these other counties are keeping for their fund balance. And again, some people will call that fluff. To me, I think that's being responsible to our citizens and being able to make the payment to our employees. That was, like I said, comments from Mr. Vols.
This was a guy that talked about government fluff and government, the blame for the deficit that we're under right now. In essence, his comment to me said, you're spending money that you don't have, so blame for the deficit. Michael, could you explain why we're at a deficit, running at a deficit right now? Can you explain that to where someone, if they're listening tonight, could understand what we're talking about as it relates to a deficit?
So we're currently at a budgeted deficit, not a cash deficit, so the budgeted revenues are obviously less than the expenditures approved. I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe that, that is currently around 31 or $32 million right now, as of today. The large, a large portion of that was an amendment for eight, a little over $8 million for the Dell Webb Building, that we moved out of the general fund, fund balance. for the Dell Webb building that we moved out of the general fund, fund balance. But really, really how we got here is, is we use some of the fund balance to balance the general fund this year. And that's kind of the fund I'm talking about. So for example, last year out of revenue loss for ARPA funds due to COVID, uh, we used approximately 23.9 million or $24 million to, to, uh, to raise our fund balance for the general fund to be able to use that to in essence balance or stopgap for revenues for, for this current year. Our total deficit, budget deficit was 64 mil, around $64 million to start the year. However, the schools, I believe started the year with a $28 million deficit. However, that was more of a strategic spin down, knowing that TISA was coming with an additional, you know, 30 to 45 million dollars to do that. And then how we got to the deficit in this, this budget before any type of recommended revenue increase is, is funding additional manpower for public health and safety buildings and, uh, picking up the previous deficit from the previous year's budget, which brought us to, I believe, I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe it's around $35 million, 35 to 36 million dollar deficit. When we started this budget process. But, uh, but really we got here from, from, from that, um, from there, the two largest funds.
When we say deficit, what does that really mean to us as a government and actually to the taxpayers? What do we do when we're running at a deficit? What do we do to correct that?
Well, I, you really only have two options from a budget deficit. You can, you know, it's pretty simple. You can decrease expenditures. I do feel like we've done that. Uh, this budget is pretty lean from my opinion. And then the other option is to increase revenue, just like any company would. Unfortunately, we, we have very limited resources to increase revenue or fees or property taxes. And, uh, I think, you know, this body has studied fees, I believe, at the, at the planning and zoning and stormwater across the street. However, when you're trying to plug somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 million, that, that's really hard to, to attach onto a fee. And so we're, we're kind of left with one option and unfortunately sometimes that's just property tax.
Thing I want to mention on that and, uh, some of our newer commissioners and also of course the public are pointing the finger at prior administrations. Well, I'm sitting here and I'm part of the prior administration. I look around a few, see a few more, but I want to point out several things. The main thing, we're talking about a deficit from there is we gave our employees a 15% pay hike. Now, why did we do that? First of all, we were losing employees. We could not keep sheriff deputies for patrol, jailers for our jails, drivers and paramedics for our ambulance service that were leaving this county, going to other municipalities and other counties. Uh, our firefighters, I mean, it goes right down the line. And basically, uh, you know, even the state was their entry level on, uh, public safety workers. Uh, the governor, Lee, uh, put a raise out for the jailers, I guess it was, which kind of started that domino effect in my mind. But that kind of raised the bar and we realized, or at least I did, being on public safety back then, we had been paying at a lower, you know, if you've got a range of pay, we were paying from middle to the lower section. But to be competitive and to keep our employees, it came evident to the commission at that time, we were going to have to raise the bar and pay toward, more toward the top end. Uh, we'd actually raised, uh, I think it was the firefighters, almost 18% within two year period there. And that's counting that 15% from last year. So a lot of that had to do with survival. Uh, we could not keep employees at our pause facility. I know several of y'all have heard that before. Uh, we still have problems. I don't know if we've got any openings right now in EMS or I'm saying, no, we do have. We probably also got openings at the jail, if I'm not mistaken, yes, we do have. And that's got to, to do with competitive pay and benefits. We're not competitive, you know, it's kind of like we got a, all of us kind of got a wake-up call last night. We had a gentleman that had a medical emergency. Well, we were lucky that we had the sheriff and several deputies here that trained to help in medical emergencies like that, and they did. And of course, we had a good response from Ursusboro City's firefighters about a block away. Notice how long it took, seemed like forever to get here, right? Well, if you're out in the county in Kitchell and you gotta wait, you know, why don't you triple that time? But keeping those response times down for our citizens and protecting them, to me, that's what, that's what our job is. And that's what we did and that's part of the reason that you've got that deficit there. And the reason that we didn't put a tax increase, or at least my reasoning behind it, last year was the amount of the new assessed values. My corner of the county and in Laverne were the two highest places in the county for increased assessments. And it went up over 50% for a lot of my folks. Well, the last thing I wanted to do was put a tax increase on top of that. At any rate, that's, that's part of why this happened and it happened. And I think that we were being responsible. I think if we had not addressed this pay problem, we would be in very bad shape right now as far as having our people and being able to have a good response time and take care of our citizens. So that's my answer to, you know, people worrying about what did the prior administration do? You know, if you go back and look, uh, we didn't get a AAA bonding rating by being frivolous with our money. That's the bottom line right there. Okay, I'm going to move on to our next person. We've got about three or four more. Phil Ford said he'd been here 32 years. Uh, he wants us to, uh, be more physically responsible and to look out for inflation. He suggested we needed a 7% increase rather than a 16% increase. If you remember, he was the economist that spoke to us. Anybody's got a comment on that here?
Thank you. So of all the speakers, I know Dr. Bill Ford, uh, very well. He's a brilliant economist, served on the Federal Reserve. And, um, he knows exactly what he's talking about when he speaks. I have a great deal of respect for Dr. Ford, have known him for a long time. I found his proposal of a 7% uh, tax increase to be interesting. And I found even more interesting how he arrived at that 7%. And I think what he was basically saying was that the current inflation rate was 5% and the growth rate of the county was on or about 2% for the current year, which at 7% should be enough of a property tax rate to increase to pay for the services. So I used that metric and I went back to the last property tax increase, which was in 2019 at 5.7% or 12 cents. And so in 2020, uh, because costs, the cost of a government accumulates, it's not just a static picture, it accumulates. And so the, uh, inflation rate in 2020 was 2% with a Rutherford County growth rate of 3%. In 2021, the inflation rate was 5% with a growth rate of 3%. And in 2022, which is last year, the inflation rate was 8% with a growth rate of almost 3%. So if you pull all those numbers together over the last four years, the property tax rate according to Dr. Ford's calculations would be closer to 30, 31%, not 7%. And so I think he's, uh, quite astute in his math. I just wanted to remind this body and the audience that it's true for one year, but we didn't raise taxes in 2022, 2021 or 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments about, uh?
I, I'm thinking just to follow up on what Dr. Ford was talking about relates. If we weren't, if we weren't so into brick and mortar, what he would say would be absolutely positively probably true. But the equation that we're talking about as it relates to borrowing money to build, to go at, at the debt service and all the cost of that building is what's driving this budget up. And, and I don't think that he was considering all the brick and mortar and the debt service that we're incurring simply because of, of his economic valuation. I, I just don't think that that was a consideration that, that he made in his equation. Once again, this budget tax increase that we're proposing deals with mostly debt service, deals with mostly us borrowing and the cost of that building is what's driving all of this stuff up. So if, if we didn't have to build, we probably wouldn't have to have an increase. It would be flat. And I think that's exactly what Mr. Ford was talking, Dr. Ford was talking about. But, but we're looking at brick and mortar, $156 million in, in brick and mortar. And that is an increase, that construction over what we've had in years past, plus just the interest in paying that is driving that debt service up considerably. So once again, we could, could live off of growth if we didn't have to build. If we didn't have to build schools and if we didn't have to build jails, if we didn't have to build judicial buildings, if we didn't have to do those kinds of things. So the, the whole deal, you know, is that what we're talking about right now is growth. And this is, this is not, this is not reoccurring like it would be to staff a school. We're talking about money that we could be collecting from a growth tax to go toward that brick and mortar. That's the solution. And that's what we've been saying for at least the last 15 years. Have been falling on deaf ears. There were a few folks that made those comments. We need to do those kind of things. Our response was, we have been making attempt after attempt to do that. When Dr. Ford was talking, I was equating that we're talking about building, we're talking about brick and mortar, we're talking about road construction, we're talking about infrastructure, we're talking about all that kind of stuff that's not reoccurring expenses. And that's where alternative taxes needed and could help. From an economic perspective, we could live off of growth. Have to pay for that growth on reoccurring expenses like building schools. So from Dr. Ford's perspective, the way he was looking at it, uh, is correct. But the way I'm looking at it, uh, is different than the way he was looking at it.
One, one thing I hear repeatedly is, you know, we, we've got all this debt and that we're putting our grandchildren into debt. And I want to point out to everybody that's listening to this, if we issued no more debt with, actually under 19 years, all our debt completely would be paid off here. We pay our debts aggressively. I know when we first started our development tax, we actually took half of that and required that to go straight to debt. That's why, you know, I worry about our debt fund and keeping that balance up. And while I'm happy to see that we raised, put the money back that we took out of that last year. To me, that's paying that debt off and keeps us closer to being debt free. But I appreciate your comments, Chairman Phillips. Next person, uh, that spoke was Susan Allen. Many of us know Susan from, uh, from many years past, but anyway, she mentioned two things. One, uh, she was concerned about paying too much per acre for the new school that was proposed. And I think she said she thought it was 85,000 an acre. I don't know what going rate is on sewered property. I know 10 years ago, we were looking for some property for a dog pound pause and we were getting quotes of 85,000 an acre on anything that was in sewer, that had sewer to it. And that was at least, well, how long's that pause building been out there? At least 10, 15 years? So I don't know, uh, the cost of buying the school's property, the way we go about doing that, but that's the school's prerogative. Our prerogative is we have to figure out a way to pay for it. But it is concerning when you see those kind of figures. So I mean, it, it's shocking that, you know, land would bring 85,000 an acre. But that's what it is in this county now. Uh, she also mentioned nonprofits, the money that we were spending for nonprofits. Specifically, she was speaking about the money that's going to the Chamber of Commerce and other entities that promote growth for this county. And her opinion was maybe we shouldn't give them quite as much money, or at least that's the way I took that. Uh, anybody else have any comments on Ms. Allen's? Next was Lyman, I believe was his name. And that's a gentleman that had the health issue. He mentioned that, uh, he had about a $200,000 assessment. He was, he was complaining about his assessment had went up very high last year and now he's looking at a possible tax increase. So, you know, the assessments are required by the state and they require every four years to all the property of the county to be reassessed by the property assessor. And at that time, the values normally raised, sometimes they are lower. Uh, just depends on the situation. But that is not, uh, anything to do with the county. And when there are assessments, we as a commission have the option of leaving our tax rate where it is or falling back to the certified rate. And what we did last year is we fell back to the certified rate. The money that, uh, was made, when I say made, the money that was, uh, generated from the reassessments, when we set our rate back to the certified rate meant that the county, Rutherford County, had no net increase in taxes. Now, you may have had personally tax increase, somebody else may had a slight decrease, but the county's money generated from property tax was equal. There was no change as far as that. So the county did not make any money from that reassessment last year. I want that, you know, that needs to be loud and clear there. As a matter of fact, that's part of the reason, again, that you, I think, see that deficit. The last thing I wanted to do was have a tax increase last year. Yes, we saw that it was probably needed, but had we put even a penny on that tax rate last year, everybody out there would have said, the county commission gave me a 51 cent tax hike or, you know, a 50%, whatever your amount was, would have been blamed back on us. And I didn't want that to fall back on this commission because we didn't do that. But that's my reasoning for us not looking at an increase last year. Those were comments from Mr. Lyman. Of course, we mentioned him at the start of the meeting. He seems to be at home and doing well and we wish him well. Uh, the next person that spoke was-
Chairman Peake?
Yes, sir.
Before you leave the assessments-
If, before you leave the assessments, now, the assessment is mandated, correct?
Yes, every four years, the state requires the property assessor to reassess all the property in the counties. Now, he can't get that all at once. It takes a while to, to get to each one of them. But yes, that's a requirement from the state. It used to be every 10 years, remember that? And when it went to four years, I thought, "This is not good."
When the assessment's made here in this county, who makes the decision whether they're go up or down?
So, in this county, because we do have our own property assessor's office, those assessors go out and they do the bulk of the work. However, the state compteur's office has a division of property assessments that assists and audits the property assessor's office on those, and then they turn around and set the state certified rate. So, the property assessor does not have anything to do with that state certified rate. But in a smaller county, who doesn't have that staff, the state will come in and redo those assessments. But in ours, we, we do have personnel that do that. So, the state assists and audits both, both, both of those things, the property assessments, reassessment, reappraisal for each property.
So, the county has no control over the assessment?
No, 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 we, we do not. I mean, it's set based on a number of factors in the county. I don't know the, it's not an exact calculation, but it's set on a number of things. When they pull it up, they look at resale, recent resale values, acreages, square footage, year built, and they look at a ton of things, but we have no say in, in that, in that part.
Any other comments from the-
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we do reassess every four years. The state has begun, I think they've already enacted some legislative mandates, not mandates, but some legislative action that would allow counties such as Rutherford County to do it every two years. We did it every two years versus every four years, those rates would be much more accurate every two years than four years. So, our tax assessor, our property assessor is, is explaining those situations to this commission. And we'll be looking at the possibility of going to a two-year assessment process, making, having some of those conversations next year. The earliest we could do it would actually be 2028, because our next assessment is actually due June 6th. So, but it would probably be in this county's best interest to reassess every two years versus every four years, simply because of what we've, what we've seen is property values go up. We'll be taking a look at that. I think the mayor's already on top of that, and the, the commission will also be looking at that, and maybe making some decisions on that as well.
This is an interesting conversation because what this body may or may not know, and I did not know until our lobbyist brought this to our attention, was that there's actually a bill filed in the Tennessee General Assembly, and I'm not sure what the status of the bill. It didn't pass, but I'm not sure that it was, it went completely through the committee process. But it would cap, it was a bill that would cap the tax rate hike to 2%. And so, what that effectively, and there was no corresponding legislation to assist the counties with development taxes, impact fees, or growth. So, a cap of 2% would have yielded us, what, four or five cents to pay for growth? So, those are the kind of things that are going on the Tennessee General Assembly on behalf of the counties.
You know, the strange thing about, as long as we've been up here, as long as I've been up here, a reassessment has always increased property values as long as I've been alive, I guess. But today, in today's market, the way things are, if we did this thing four years from now and, and property values were down versus up, then we would look at not reducing the rate, but increasing the rate without having to do anything extra, simply because it'd have to be a neutral situation. Doing it every four years would make that, I'm sorry, doing it every two years would make that much more realistic and give us better decision, make, let us make better decisions as to what that property tax rate should be, so.
Thank you. Any other comments along those lines? If not, as I mentioned, the next person to speak was Jim Thompson. I think he's from Rockvale, Eagle Bay area, but he mentioned driving by the new public safety building out at Rockvale, said he was proud to see that, pointed out that nothing is free, that he was okay with the way we're basically headed, and he understands that the growth, and I think he mentioned, as he drove out that way, he saw three brand-new schools in that area, and he realized that somebody had to pay for those, too. Any comments from the committee about Mr. Thompson? Next person that spoke was Mark Marino. He's a gentleman that mentioned that he had heard Chairman Harris on WGNS, and he, he asked us to make sure we had no fluff and also to don't be irresponsible. Chairman Harris, you want to?
Normally, I don't care, but I didn't say that. I just said, I said there was no fluff in our budget. So, I went back and looked, and I did not say that.
Okay, any other questions about Mr. Marino's statements? Something that, that Mark, Mr. Marino, said, you know, a lot of people have that conception that this county is just throwing money around, and that is not the case. I mean, these hearings are all open, all of our budget hearings are open. You see us moving money, most of the time, that's money that's already been budgeted, that's not new money. You know, if there's new money discussed, pointed out whenever we vote on something like that. So, anyway, we try our best to be very responsible with the citizens' money. The next person that spoke was Blaine Little. He pointed out that he was a realtor, and he was sad that we seem to be pitting realtors against farmers. He said he was, he liked seeing farms, didn't want to see them developed. He understood that it does happen, though, and being realistic, you know, that farmland that you see out there is somebody's 401K. And when they pass away, usually their heirs can make the decision at that time whether they want to continue farming or whatever else they want to do. I know I've been contacted by three individuals in the last year, year and a half, that exact Person that had farmed it a long time has passed away, and their heirs have decided, "Well, we're going to do something with this property." That's part of where we're seeing the growth there. But again, these people have the right to do that. That's basically a farmer's 401K, is that property there. Anybody else have any comments about Mr. Little? The last one I've got was Susan Haisley, the lady from Chattanooga, and we've already discussed her. She does recognize the needs, but she wants us to find other options to get money, and she wanted to compare us again to Hamilton County. I think we've done a good job of comparison there. Mayor, you got any other comments, though?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to get my math right, so I was just talking to Michael. Thank you for being, I'm just going to be real quick, and then I'm, and I'm done. Several, I've gotten several comments, as you have, and will probably continue to have over the next week. "You guys aren't cutting the budget. Why don't you cut? Why don't you find places to cut?" And I, I just got through talking to Michael, and the fact of the matter is, is we did. And maybe we haven't done it a good enough job, or I haven't done a good enough job of saying that. But the property tax increase that we're proposing is less than 1.5 million dollars per penny. That's 20, and so, we're proposing 26 cents. That's, that's less than $39 million is what we're proposing to the budget. We've got a budget deficit of $64 million. On paper, we will have about $7 million. So, we, before we even started the process of finding the pennies necessary to balance this budget and remove the deficit, we found $18 million internal to the budget to save the Rutherford County taxpayer. So, to say that we didn't is totally inaccurate statement. And I'm not, I'm not saying that to you gentlemen, you, you guys know this already, but I'm saying that, more importantly, probably, to the viewing audience and the people that were here last night, who I understand completely say, "Why aren't you cutting government? Why aren't you cutting the cost? Why aren't you getting rid of the fluff? What are you doing?" And I'm saying, that's what we did first. That's where we started. We started there, saying, "What can we do?" Every single department came into my office, and I said, "Do not bring me an expanded budget over last year. Don't do it." And with the exception of first responders, for obvious reasons, they did it. And so, that was the, that's where we found savings. So, I don't like this property tax rate any more than you do. I hate it. But it is where it is, and for us to be physically responsible and conservative, we have to balance our budget first. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That concluded all the people that I've got on my notes that spoke last night, and the best of my memory there, in my notes, their comments. This time, I want to look at the 2023-24 budget and review any of these budgets as necessary, and I want to open the floor to any of our committee members, if you've got a suggestion or change you'd like to see, or something you'd just like to discuss in the budget, or maybe something that you heard last night. One thing I will mention, if we do not make any changes tonight, what we sent to the papers will be what we look at on the 21st, and we will not need a motion on that now. If we change something tonight, of course, that, that could change it. Commissioner Irving.
Thank you, Chairman. I might have listened with great interest to the constituents, to my constituents, and lots of folks across the county, including at the public hearing and this evening, and in other conversations. I heard from many on a fixed income who will be significantly affected, and from some who can afford to pay the tax increase, but who ask good questions about the use of their tax money. I listened carefully to, to the proposals by Commissioners Gooch and Piercy that would have eliminated the tax increase. There appear to be two main perspectives, either no tax increase or a 16% tax increase. Since the 16% tax increase plan has been very well represented and discussed, I'm going to offer a plan that does not include a tax increase in this budget. The plan has a couple of components. One is the adjustments to get to not having a tax increase. The other component is that this must be, must be viewed as a one-year challenge. So, what's involved in the one-year challenge? During the upcoming year, the plan would require that the commission, through its appropriate committees, would study and come up with recommendations and implement or prepare for implementation in the next budget cycle, additional sources of revenue, such as the wheel tax, severance tax, fire tax, and an updated impact fee or adequate facilities tax. And that's not an exhaustive list. Likewise, the plan would require the, the study and analysis and implementation over the next year of various processes, things like a two-year appraisal cycle, as I believe it was Commissioner Phillips just mentioned, when, as soon as it's available, procurement centralization, an internal audit department, and county services in general, a review of all those, all of which I understand are long overdue for a county of this size. And that's not an exhaustive list either. With a one-year challenged budget in place, urgency and getting it done would be critical because failure would mean going through this partial, potential, sorry, potential tax increase process again. So, what are the adjustments that I'm proposing to the mayor's budget? We start with the 26.13 pennies in the beginning of the tax increase in the mayor's budget. I would suggest removing 10 pennies in the Education Capital Projects Fund, 177, and if possible, I propose financing 15 million for the projects in this fund for the next year only, for this coming year only. I suggest taking 2 pennies out of, out of Ambulance Fund, 118, and I'd suggest taking 14 pennies out of the General Fund, that's 101. That results, I recognize, in a $21 million deficit in the General Fund with a 15% fund balance percentage. If possible, I propose to make up the $21 million deficit in the General Fund with an increase in the wheel tax in an appropriate amount. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt those adjustments.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, Commissioner Johnson.
Could you go over those adjustments again? What I've written down, tell me where I'm missing something. You're going to take 10 cents from 177?
Yes.
And put it where? Or just eliminate it?
I'm removing 10 pennies.
Okay, and then you're going to take 2 cents from ambulance?
Yep.
And then-
118.
And then 14 cents out of 101?
Yes.
Just eliminate it?
Yes.
And then, to make up that difference in the General Fund, whatever a wheel tax would be?
Yes, and I'd, I'd work with Michael to figure it exactly, to confirm exactly how this, if there's a need to put it somewhere, then we can put it somewhere.
Okay, and just, the one-year challenge would be to study implementation of other type taxes, such as a wheel tax, severance tax, and other taxes, go to a two-year reappraisal, an audit department, and then the adjustments?
Yes, fire tax, updated impact fee, adequate facilities fee, two-year appraisal, procurement centralization, internal audit department, and a general review of county services.
Question.
Chairman Harris?
So, you're wanting to take 10 cents out of the Capital Project 177, and you're wanting to, help me understand this. So, to handle the capital projects with 177, you're saying borrow the money?
Right.
Okay, so, Michael, you, you have went over this?
No.
Okay, because where does this put us at on our debt, on our AAA? This has put us way below 28%.
I think Commissioner Irvin said 15% in his calculations when you started on the General Fund, right?
Right, 15%, the AAA, it goes through the floor.
bring that fund to zero property tax. It would eliminate 2 pennies from ambulance service, which would still leave an additional .0052 pennies, and it would take an additional 14 pennies away from the general fund, which I believe you, I'm making sure I got these numbers right. I believe you said a 21 million dollar deficit in the, in the county general fund, and I am, I am showing a 20.9 million, so I'm, I'm right there. That would leave, according to my calculations, a little slightly over 15.2 or so percent in fund balance? And then, give me one second left, that would then leave a deficit, so that would be, yep, right at 21 million dollar deficit in county general, and I would be at a approximately 3 million dollar deficit in ambulance service fund?
Yes, whatever the...
I was just making sure, which technically would still result in a tax increase of .0013.
Okay, and that's one of my questions. Where, where's the best place I could, to allocate that .0013 to end up with no tax increase?
Where would you pull it from? Is that, is that what you're asking me?
Right, where's the best place to, because that's not a lot.
I don't know, I try not to make recommendations on where to move pennies around. That, that would be y'all's call.
Do we have any idea of what effect that will put on the wheel tax fee?
Mr. Johnson?
I, I think the challenge here could be accepted, and I believe the possibility of being able to spread out the revenue needs that we have, such as the wheel tax and the mental severance tax, et cetera, that would be less of a burden on the property taxpayers. Give us a little bit more leeway. That's my rationale.
I do have an answer for Commissioner Piercy. Again, I'm doing this on the fly as far as wheel tax. I do believe it'd be somewhere in the 80 to 85 dollar range to make up approximately, was your motion to make up the 21 million through wheel tax? That, is that what you're asking, to make up that general fund deficit?
Yeah, short answer, yes, and the bigger question is, is it possible, time-wise, in terms of a timeline? Because there's, there's a couple of aspects to this. One, if it were to fail, then we're stuck with a 21 million dollar deficit. If it does not, if it does not fail, we're basically looking at balanced with, I mean, you have to go to a referendum.
There is not time to do it by July 1, because we already have the agenda set for tomorrow night. So, yes, you could get it on the Ju-, June 26th agenda, and then we would have to have the meeting in July, and then I don't know the waiting period off the top of my head. For some reason, is it 90 days? For some reason, I was thinking 30, but it may be 90. And then during that time, if you get approximately, it's either 10 or 20% of signatures in the last governor's election, I believe is what me and the county attorney discussed, that if you get enough on that, then it would go to a referendum vote at the next, I can't remember if it was the next, it's not a special called election, it's whatever the next scheduled election would be, which I would assume would be the next presidential election, which would be in 2024, I'm running my dates through my head, and so then you would be left with what Commissioner Irvin said, which is, at that point, your hands would be tied. If it, if you got the signatures, your hands would be tied up until 2024 on the wheel tax. And then if it passed that, you still couldn't implement it, you can't backdate it, so.
And the, you'd asked where to put the extra money, the general fund had a little extra, so I'd put that .0013 in there.
Just to, to take it, okay, hold on, I'll plug that in.
It'll leave you about 15, right?
Yeah, I'd bring you to 21.2, 21.2 million deficit.
Michael, did you say that the, the wheel tax to cover that would be 85 dollars, or 85 dollars in addition to what we're already?
In addition, I'm sorry, I, I should have clarified that, in addition to the current 50 dollars we charge, plus the state's fee, of course, that's a regular plate now, like we talked about the other night.
I got a question on Commissioner Irvin, I think you said finance the 177 capital projects expenditure. Have we contemplated the 18 million dollars debt service that we would have to pay next year, and what would that do to our fund balance percentage for the debt service fund, adding that additional debt service?
I wouldn't know that calculation.
So, so a couple of things. One, that would not take all 18 million out of education capital projects, we would still have, I believe, let me, let me double check this number here, because I believe you were moving the pennies, which would still leave attic school facilities tax in there, which next year's budget is 2.4 million. So that would stay in 177. I don't believe your motion had anything to do with that, correct?
10 cents, I think.
No, I don't believe so.
And then, so I, I need to calcu-, I have that to calculate, let me calculate the addition to debt service, give me one second, and I'll, I'll put that in there as well.
Sorry, can you repeat that, there are too many things going on.
I was saying, it, your motion did not affect the school facilities tax, which was 2.4 million dollars, it's still in 177. And then I will calculate, give me one second, and I will calculate the effect on...
On the debt, on the debt service fund.
Is your, I just want to make sure I'm clarifying correct, your motion would be to finance the, everything except the 2.4 million, so it would be approximately 15.7 million dollars. Would you finance that up? Run the numbers to finance that next year, is that what you're asking?
Can you repeat?
There's 18 million, 88,561 dollars budgeted for the fund 177. If you remove all of the pennies from there, the remaining 10 pennies, that would leave you with 2.4 million dollars. That's a difference of right at 15.7 million dollars that we'd be financing next year. I just want to make sure I was reading your motion correctly.
15.7?
I'm rounding by 20,000 dollars, but yes.
That's fine.
That would add an additional approximately 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars in appropriations to the debt service fund. So that would bring your debt service fund to a deficit of a little over 3.3 million
Mr. Chairman, take into consideration it's been 23 years since the wheel tax has had anything done with it, okay? Look at the growth that the people coming in here with the traffic and the number of automobiles. That's one factor involved, too.
If we stuck to the original motion that Mr. Harris made the other night, and deducted 50 dollars and add that to the wheel sticker, since it's 50 dollars now and we just simply doubled it, what percentage would we still have to have, or how many pennies in the increase would we have to have?
I'm making the error of money tonight. I believe that'd be 18, 26 minus 8 is 18, so 18 pennies, give or take, I mean, I'm, I'm rounding on the spot here, but very close to that, yes.
If anyone else from the committee have a comment, not, I'd like to speak to the wheel tax portion of, of his amendment. Thing that I say, and I don't have a problem with us looking at the wheel tax, however, for the amount of money that we're looking at bearing from the wheel tax, I think it would be irresponsible for us to do that. Because first of all, I don't think we're gonna see the funds from that that we think we'll get. I'm gonna ask Ms. Dalborn, if she's got a mo-, if you, if you would, you can give me your opinion. I'm, I'm stating my opinion. I feel like the timing would be a problem, and to me, I have no problem going to a referendum to do this. That would give you, that would assure you that the money would be coming there, that doesn't assure you how it would come in, and if it would come in in time to pay our bills. And with you taking this money down to 15%, you are scraping the bottom of the barrel, and you are endangering us in being able to make payroll. And to me, that's irresponsible. Dalborn?
Strangely enough, I'm actually speaking for your county clerk, Lisa Crowell, my good friend who I shared lunch with today, and we had this conversation. And I was sitting back there just about to explode on the chair, because we actually talked about how much increase that she's received in revenue in the office since we did away with emissions. And what I can attest to, and I saw with my own eyes, is how much increased traffic comes through our parking lot now that people are no longer taking their cars out of county to avoid higher expenses with their car tax. And her estimation, and from my observation, would be that if you were to look at increasing the wheel tax to a rate that's higher than neighboring counties, we will actually probably see a decrease in revenue. That's her professional opinion. I could say that I would agree with that, just based on my observations of the traffic flow through her office. I, I don't mean to step out of turn to speak for her, but literally, we had that conversation today, when we were discussing any ways that we could perhaps help in the situation as constitutional officers. So I don't mean to throw a damper on the, but it's like unintended consequences. You know, the Fed raised the rates, and we've seen a decrease in ourselves, the, the percentage rates on the interest rates. We've seen a decrease in real estate sales because of that. Everything that you think might increase revenue can have an unintended consequence, and I'd really like to put forward that her, what I understood with the conversation we had today, today at lunch, was her professional opinion would be that we would actually have reduced revenue if you did such. I just wanted to share that with you. And Lisa, forgive me if I've stepped out of turn in speaking for you tonight.
One thing I want to repeat too, is I'm not up here trying to say you don't have a good idea. I applaud you for digging into this budget and trying to find alternatives. That's something all of us are trying to do. So, don't take that as me trying to browbeat, I'm giving you my opinion, what I've seen in the past, I think that we're pushing our limits when we get down to 15%. I think, I think we need to stay well above that to maintain our AAA bond rating, I think we need to stay above that to be physically responsible to our citizens and being able to pay the bills on time. I've had my say there. Mayor?
Yeah, if, if it's okay, I've got a question for Michael Smith. Michael, you know, when we can, you and I can constructed this budget over the last several months, one of the things that we talked about on several occasions was not just fixing the past with the ongoing deficits, and getting things set for this calendar year 23-24, excuse me, fiscal year 23-24, but setting this county up over the next two to three years, so we would be on extremely solid ground going forward with the expenditures, the capital projects that Dr. Sullivan's brought, and that this body has talked about. What does this propose, this proposal do to our financial certainty with regard to the obligations we're gonna have beyond 23-24?
So, so a couple of things that I'll point out, is I think at some point next year, we'll obviously borrow next month, but I think at, at some point next year, the schools have indicated that there's be an elementary school coming in the approximate 60 million dollar range. That interest rate will be much higher than, than 4%, kind of what we're estimating now. But I think two or three things I want to point out, as far as this right here, just in the last couple of months, this body has approved several million dollars worth of no matching grants, which, which is really good for the county. However, this body would have to amend your fund balance policy to be able to approve those grants going forward, because that, that much money would dip you below the 15%. And I think the two, two or three other things to consider, just factually, would be, the, if we borrow the, approximately 15.7 million dollars for the, for the school system, those, those capital improvement needs don't, don't go away. So while that would take care of next year, I'm not sure what would, what would happen the following year in this, in this, this model here. And I think the other thing that, that would give me pause and concern too, is, is this budget does not take into account, the budget that the mayor presented only takes into account funding staffing for the Walter Hill and Last Castis Public Health and Safety buildings, you would still have, I believe, Delwad and Christiana coming on the year after that as well, and so we would have to find some way to address that. Because this, this will probably be one of the first years, we act, we won't end at 32 million dollar budget deficit where we are now, but we will, unless something changes in, in the next couple of weeks or, you know, couple of months, you know, we very well will get into an actual deficit, not a budget deficit, which will be the first time in a long time for us, when I went back and looked. And so if we do that, and then if we budget 21 or 22 million dollars in the deficit next year, we may not end there, but we may end at, let's say, 5 or 10 million dollars to the deficit. That, that, that pot of money we have to balance the fund every year gets smaller and smaller, and at some point, it, it won't be there. And so I think that would, that's just something that I think needs to be considered over the next two to three years, or even four years. Because, while this budget takes into account the 60 million dollar elementary school, I don't have the school's capital plan right in front of me, but I do believe there was a high school on there in year three, I'm kind of looking back to Dr. Sullivan, I think that was year three, which, and I'm rounding here, but I believe that'd be in the approximately 125, 130 million dollar range. So I think there wouldn't, that just needs to be taken into consideration here, but I think in the immediate future, it would be, I believe the sheriff's office, for instance, have a grant for, I believe it was half a million dollars, that we, that we just looked, that we just did as half a million. You know, while even that's a zero match, that also increases appropriations, which lowers your percent of fund balance to appropriations, so while yes, this body does have the authority to lower your fund balance appropriations amount below 15% if you were to change that, we are getting dangerously close to cash flow needs for the months of, you know, April through September. And keep in mind, I, we, you know, we have, the bulk of our bond payments are also in April, as far as cash flow, so I just want that noted. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the committee? Any other discussion from the committee? Here none. Call roll, Mark.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
No.
Mr. Sreenya?
No.
Mr. Gooch? Mr. P?
No.
As I, as I stated before, Commissioner Irvin, I applaud you for looking and digging on this, and I don't want you to give up looking. I don't think any of us are giving up looking. We're all looking for options, and this, this two-year period that you're, you were proposing to, I've got my notes right here, a one-year challenge, rather, uh, I think it's imperative that we dig into things like that, and I, I think the wheel tax is a viable option. Again, my feelings is something like that, especially at the level you're looking at changing, we've really got to look into that. If our, uh, elected officials think that it would hurt us as far as the revenues coming in, if we raised it that much, I think that's something we need to take into account. But not only that, I, I personally would rather that go to referendum. I don't want to make that decision for that amount. You know, if we were looking at, you know, 10, $10, $5, something like it, you know, that's something I could consider, uh, possibly, without going to a referendum. However, I'll just be plain with you, people in my area hate the wheel tax, because they were once proper, promised it would go away. And actually, the commission did take it away, but another commission brought it back. But some of the other things that you were talking about, you know, I think, uh, you know, looking at our county services, of course, we're increasing it, uh, our fire safety throughout the county, you know, that's something we got to pay for. But I think that's something you mentioned was county services looking at that. Impact fees, Lord knows, we've been looking at that. I, I hope that we can convince our state legislators to help us with that. The fire tax, that is something, that is a consideration, uh, something I vehemently do not want in my area. If you want a fire tax in your district, knock yourself out. I don't. The people in my area don't. Be blunt and plain, we don't need 30 to 50 cent fire tax, when we're already generating enough money to pay for the fire service in the rural area through our existing side of tax money. Doubt that, come to me and Mike, and we'll prove it to you. Do I have any other budget amendments or changes that we'd like to see tonight? Do, the floor is open, and this is your opportunity to talk about that. If not, next meeting. Chairman Gooch?
I think that, um, again, I appreciate what you try to do. Uh, there's just a few things that I, I just couldn't live with with that, and that's one, the, the main thing is Fund 177. I think we've talked about that. But I'm gonna make our chairman irritate you a little bit, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay.
I'm going to try one more time. I'm gonna change it up a little bit. Uh, I hope I can get a second. If it fails, it fails, and we just go home, go home. So I'll make a motion to create a 28-cent fire tax.
You're right.
My wife says I'm good at that, but anyway, uh, a $10 wheel tax in direction to the mayor, and I can help you, Mr. Mayor, to go back and cut $3 million from the budget. Fast five that.
I have a motion on the floor to add a $10 wheel tax, and what, what was, 28-cent fire tax?
Fire district taxes.
Fire district tax, and that's a one district that covers the rural area to the county. And just so I'm...
Yeah.
I remember from the other, other night, and for the mayor to find $3 million.
And I can help him.
You can help him. Okay.
Is, is that 3 million, is that $3 million a certain fund?
Yeah, that's what I was fixing to ask.
That general?
From the general fund.
Okay.
And, and that would, and you're also, uh, cutting the 26 cents, I'm assuming, I mean, I think you're implying that, but cutting the 26 cents.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And, excuse me, wheel, wheel tax, where did you want that to go? Or just keep the same percentage?
Uh, the, in addition to the $10, to the, uh, general fund.
So the 3 million is basically 2 cents?
Now, I, I'm, full disclosure, I, I know we left last time, I'm not sure that we would have, there's still several steps I don't have the answers to on the fire.
Well, let's just, why don't we just do this? Let's just wait and see if we get a second, and then...
That's, that's where I was headed. We've got a 28, proposed motion for a 28-cent fire tax for a single rural fire tax district, a $10 wheel tax increase, and basically 2-cent cut to the general fund. Have I got that correct? $3 million?
That's the way I heard, yes.
Do I have a second? Dr. Bullen used to say, I'll give you another second for a second. Motion dies for lack of second. Anyone else have a proposal or anything we can look at tonight? If not, as I was fixing to state, what we sent to, uh, publication or the public hearing is what we will, uh, look at, at our next meeting, which is on the...
21st?
21st. And at that time, we will have to sit, approve, approve the tax levy resolution and, uh, the appropriations resolution. We have other business that will come up, and there will be some slight changes to what was published because of some changes that have taken place. For instance, the opioid committee met today, there was some, uh, money that they spent out of that grant money that they've got. That will...
I was gonna see if I could make a statement to that.
Please, go ahead.
So, there will be a couple changes. We will prepare everything as went to the publication for y'all to vote on. However, there will be a couple of changes, um, to, to that. Tomorrow night, that goes before the commission, I, I believe it's on the consent agenda, is the, I believe it's 144,000 or 144,500 for opioid money that was approved previously to today's opioid meeting. And then at today's opioid meeting, um, the opioid bor, board approved two new additional grants out of the opioid funds, and so all of those funds, what the opioid board approved was for those to go into effect in July. So I just want to make a statement so everybody sees, because right now, it shows the general fund being balanced. It is going to show the general fund being at a deficit. However, that is because the revenue received from the opioid money is going to be in this fiscal year, what they were in right now, not in next fiscal year. So I just want to make that disclaimer, is we're spending down those restricted funds next year that we would have gotten this year. So I, I just wanted to kind of to make that disclaimer, when somebody sees that, you know, we're saying we're balancing the general fund, and all of a sudden you see a deficit, that's why. Uh, but that would include that on the 21st as well, we would include that as well.
Any other changes that you see of what we've, actually, this committee has approved?
I'm looking at Mark. I can't think, I think we've made all the changes. Do you, can you think of any change?
The only thing I know that's coming on the 21st is the, um, hazardous materials preparedness grant was awarded to us through emergency management. It does have a match, um, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking like $9,000.
Okay.
So it'll, it would come on the 21st, and then go to commission on the 26th also to be approved, so we would need to add that into the budget, and, and, uh, to be able to fund that match.
So, you see what we've got to look forward to on the 21st? Are there any other comments or business tonight? Here none, we're adjourned.